Twenty-second, two thousand and eleven. If I could ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Anne Mayer.
Here.
Carol Chelman.
Here.
Rebecca Emerson.
Here.
Dexter Legg.
Here.
Kent LaPage.
Here.
Anne Walker.
Here.
Mitch Shulman.
Here.
Tom Martin.
Here.
Leslie Stevens.
Here.
Clay Haywood.
Here.
Linda Brulette.
Yeah.
Savannah Fadaro.
Very good. So, I'd ask you to stand and join me for a moment of silence and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of March eighth, two thousand and eleven.
Go move.
Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, accepting.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So, we'll move into the public comment. We have one person who's signed up so far, but if there are other people who would like to speak as well that haven't had an opportunity to sign up after this person speaks, by all means, so, Mr. Ritso. So, come up here, state your name and address, and where would you like him to stand?
Sit.
Sit or stand near the microphone? Please.
My name is James Ritso, and I'm here as Mayor of North Carolina. We live at one hundred Cloud Drive in Portsmouth, and we've lived there for about twenty-five years. Our children and grandchildren have gone to Little Harbor School and Don Darrow School. And we're here tonight to address the issue that is ten A in your packet tonight, dealing with the traffic pattern on Cloud Drive. You have before you a copy of the tax map, and you have the minutes of the Traffic and Safety Committee of October of last year. Basically, what has happened is Cloud Drive in the morning has been shut off to traffic on one lane. That is for the proposal of having bicycles and scooters ride down the wrong lane of the road. What happens is, I cannot get out of my driveway in the morning. I cannot take a left turn because the traffic is shut off and it's a one-way street. They put up a sign that says I can't take a right turn, so I really can't go anywhere. And the sign unfortunately came down when I hit it with a snowplow. But anyway, we're here tonight to see if we can make a new recommendation to the Traffic and Safety Committee. Living there for twenty-five years, we've never had any problem with bicycles or scooters on the road. They've always used the sidewalk. There's a twelve-foot area between the curb and the fence. And as you can see in your packet, Cloud Drive is a city street halfway down to where the school property starts. Our driveway comes out and onto school property, and then we get onto the public street. Cars park on the right-hand side of the street to let children in and out of the vehicles in the morning and in the afternoon. Well, we've never had any problem except for the driveway being blocked on occasion, but people are pretty good about that, and they're courteous, and they try not to block the driveway. Now, last year, we had a new principal at Little Harbor School, and he's been there two years now. He decided there was a problem with bikes and scooters on the sidewalk. And he has put in a proposal that, in the morning, from eight fifteen to nine o'clock, they're going to block one lane, the ingress lane. They're going to move all the cars over to the outbound lane, driving in on the wrong side. Okay, I may take more than a minute, I'm sorry, Anne. But what has happened is, the kids don't ride on the street, anyway. They ride their bikes on the sidewalk. They're little kids, little bikes, little scooters, and no one has ever really used that lane that I can see. When they come down to my driveway, there's a sign that says, "Walk your bikes from here on." Now, my suggestion would be, forget about the one-way traffic, forget about the cones, forget about the signs, move the walking bike sign up to the end of Cloud Drive. That's what they do, anyway. They ride the bikes down South Street, Union Street, all the streets coming into it, Richards, Miller. They all ride on the sidewalk. When they get to Cloud Drive, they walk across those crosswalks. They're supposed to get back on their bikes, ride halfway down, get back off the bikes, and walk the bikes to school. Doesn't make any sense to me, and with all due respect to whoever thought it up, it's a pretty dumb idea, and I don't think it's safe. If you move the sign, that would be the end of the problem. Now, there'll be a recommendation tonight from Mr. McDonough, who was unaware of the problem until I brought it to his attention. I don't know how it got to Traffic and Safety in the first place, last year, but it did. And they passed a rule, thinking that they owned, the school owned all of Cloud Drive, which isn't true. So, what happens now is, whatever happens here, has to go back to Traffic and Safety on April fifteenth, I'm sorry, fourteenth, and it's going to be reconsidered. But if you move the sign to the end of the street, that's the end of the problem. If they want to limit the time to eight-thirty to quarter-nine, when school is in session, that will still be a problem, but it'd be a lot better than it is now. You don't need it year-round, and you don't need to do it in the winter, you don't need to do it. So, if you did it at all, do it from April fifteenth to October fifteenth, when school's in session. Other than that, forget the whole thing, move the sign, and everyone would be better off. The kids would be safer, I'd be happier, and that would be the end of it. If you have any questions?
Thank you.
I don't know how much time I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to be on the agenda later, I guess. Oh, also, I have a sign here that, I just want to show you the picture. It's kind of interesting. It shows our house, and it shows Cloud Drive, it shows the driveway. You can see my house, the brown house on the bottom.
It's such a beautiful house.
Yeah.
(laughing). The other guy's got to pay for it. They have to go to work. But anyway, you can see where the sign is, you can see where the road is, and this came off the wall of Portsmouth Pizza Factory.
Huh?
So.
Beautiful.
Beautiful. Beautiful.
Watch out for the, yeah.
Yeah, be careful of all those wires there.
An interesting photograph that shows all the islands.
Beautiful.
It is a nice.
Shows our house and the school area down here.
Pretty. Careful, careful, careful.
But it shows where the driveway is, and where the road is, where the school is. And also, there's a bike path that comes out at the end of that road, that should be used for business. So, to make things a lot easier, just leave the sign. Otherwise, we're sitting in my driveway with a candlelight on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? State your name and address, please.
The microphone here.
That, yes, that's right, sticking up, that little thing.
Mark Brighton, two eighty-five Union Street. The other night, when I got home, it was, I got home a little later than usual, and my wife said, "Mark, you better come and sit down and watch this on TV." It was the school board meeting, so I came into it halfway, I admit. But I have to say, I was a little flabbergasted with what I was hearing concerning the, well, I'll use less inflammatory words, the desire to control who uses the school buildings. I don't think I can say anything other than what Kent LaPage and Rebecca Emerson have already said, but the loss of income, obviously, is a concern, but I, for the life of me, don't understand what you people are afraid will happen if, I mean, for that matter, let's even say that the KKK did decide to come to Portsmouth and use a building. So what? You can regulate things like, I suppose, no fisticuffs, you know, no graffiti on the walls, but let them speak. Man, what a teachable moment. And unlike some of my friends, I don't believe that putting the Association of Portsmouth taxpayers and the KKK in the same sentence is not a reflection on the APT. I'm sure it's the case of we're being the least offensive speakers, and perhaps the KKK being the most. But I really don't understand what you're afraid of, so please, really reconsider this. We need the income, and quite frankly, we could use with a little speech in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Oops, careful. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. We'll close the public comment, and we'll move on to, we have a special presentation this evening.
Yes, so, Principal Callahan, thank you for inviting us here to Don Darrow this evening. Would you introduce the teachers and students who will be presenting this evening?
Please be welcome. As you know, technology has been a big focus this year, and so, what I've asked is for our fifth-grade team. It's Mrs. French, and I have Brian, and Clay, and Addie, and they're going to share their digital stories with you. So first, Mrs. French is going to explain the process, and then each of them will take a moment to show you their success.
Thanks. So first, I just want to thank you guys for inviting us here to present these personal narrative digital projects to you. As Mrs. Callahan mentioned, Molly French, Mrs. Dunham could not be here tonight, but we do have our fifth graders. We have Addie, Clay, and Brian. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on what we've been doing and what this project is. The students drafted, revised, and they edited personal narratives. Each year, students write a personal narrative, but in fifth grade, we focus on expanding their ideas, using dialogue in their stories, as well as internal dialogue. In the beginning of the year, our focus, we focus on building our reading fluency to improve comprehension as well. In order to provide an authentic audience for our personal narrative writing, we guide the students through the process of making this writing into a movie or slideshow. The students begin by breaking their stories apart into scenes, then they choose or create pictures to depict each scene. Once the planning is done, the students import, or they scan their pictures into iMovie, which is a program we have on our Macs. Once the pictures are imported, the students organize them, then they record and import their voices using iTouches. The hardest part is making the pictures and their voices match up. The kids use various editing tools to make this happen. Some students further experiment by adding sound effects, special effects, or even music in the background. To be most successful and timely, we utilize the help of various teachers and paraprofessionals. Our paras, Matt Allen and Linda Carter, provide incredible support. We couldn't have done it without their help. And we need, we also need to have a flexible schedule with the computer labs, so that we're able to access it whenever we need it. We use a variety of hardware and software, including we use the Macs, iTouches, we use iPhones, scanners, flash drives, cameras, flip cameras, we use document cameras, Kid pics, iMovie, GarageBand, and Word. So they use a lot of different things with the cameras, as well as the different technology pieces. These projects take a considerable amount of time, creativity and organizational skills. After writing the processes, after the writing process is complete, it takes another four to five weeks to actually put these movies together. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to, before I share each movie, they're just, I'm going to let each student kind of tell you what their personal narrative is about, and maybe about their experience, and then I'm going to show you their movie with them. If you have any questions after, you're welcome to ask. So Brian is our first person. Brian, if you just want to tell them what your personal narrative is about before I show them.
My personal narrative was about water skiing, and I, I had a hard time recording my voice, because I had to do it over and over again, because I messed up.
What pieces did you mess up that was hard?
Like, I don't know.
Reading through it, through the whole thing, right? You would find that he would read through, and then he would make mistakes. So we had to learn a process of reading each paragraph, pausing, and then doing it again. So it's kind of a neat process that he got to learn. So we'll share his here.
Water skiing, by Maran O'Malley. I was in the water staff, and I had boots to the right size. I was at Pleasant Lake. I was happy to water ski for the first time. I wanted to water ski for a long time. My sister threw me the rope, it's straight until the boat started moving. I felt the pole. This is what I thought, the ski started flattening on top of the water. Then this tip of the ski hit the water. I flipped over, my leg twisted when I fell. It hurt a lot. I was kind of scared to go again. The boat started moving, I felt the pole. This time, I really wanted to get up. The water spang into me. I started to glide on top of the water. I got up, it felt like I was going fast, but I was not. It was easier than I thought. We were going straight to a wave. I hit it, I was wobbling a little. We also getting tired after six to nine minutes, so I let go. Momentum brought me forward, ten feet, but I still had to swim back. "Good job," my sister said. My mom gave me a towel. I could not wait to tell my grandma about it. We tried the boat at the dock. I ran up to the house. I told my grandma, "Time for lunch," my mom said. I wanted to go again, but it was almost time to go home. "Okay," I said. I walked up to the house. I hit my own charger, excited about getting up. "Time to go home," my dad said. Your uncle in the car. Even though I was tired, I was happy.
All right, my next one is Addie.
My personal narrative was about my family and I going to Aspen, and we, and like, some of my parents' friends went there, too. And it was also a great way to go there, because it was just like two weeks before I moved
Aspen, by Addie Warren. It was a winter night. I can't believe my family's in Aspen. The night was still young, so we were planning to swim. My friend Patricia was visiting Denver and went to Aspen. She did not know anybody except me, so it was a great way for her to swim and meet people. Aspen was so exciting. Patricia, Sarah, and I went to the lobby to eat before we swam. I did not want to eat, but my dad said, "Addie, if you want to swim, you have to eat." So I did. Patricia and Sarah also ate. When all the kids were done eating, we had to change into our bathing suits. I ran into my room and was rushing and tripping and falling. It took longer than usual, because I couldn't wait. When I went down to the elevator, Patricia and Sarah were waiting. "Let's go," one of them said impatiently. We went to the door to open it. "Wow," I said surprisingly. "Most of the kids were in the pool." "Let's jump," said Sarah. We jumped at the same time. Ah, it was freezing. Our teeth were chattering, and we were shivering. It was the moment I was waiting for. We were in the pool. Suddenly, the teenagers, my sister's friend, went to the jacuzzi. We followed, because we were lonely, even though some kids were there. "Wow, this is so much better, relaxed sensation," I said, while fading my voice away. As time went by, Kyle and Dylan came to swim. So we followed, because our friends came. Whenever a lot of people went to the jacuzzi or to the swim in the pool, we followed. Same thing with the teenagers. We watched what people were doing.
Welcome to the Historic District Commission Meeting of the City of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, March second, two thousand and eleven. My name is Sandra Daika, I'm the chairman. I'd like to introduce to you the other commissioners. To my right, George Melcher.
Good evening.
John Wykoff.
Good evening.
William Gladhill.
Good evening.
Vice Chairman Richard Katz.
Good evening.
And on my left, Roger Clum from the Planning Department.
Good evening.
Liz Good from the Planning Department.
Good evening.
And Commissioner Tracy Kozak.
Good evening.
The first order of business this evening is the approval of minutes from February ninth, two thousand and eleven. Do I hear a motion?
Well, motion, and to add that I was present here at that meeting.
Yes, a correction.
It's about time we had a correction.
Any other corrections or additions?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The first public hearing this evening is petition of eighteen-twenty-seven Chief House Condominium Association, owner for property located at one fifty-nine State Street, wherein permission is requested to allow exterior changes to an existing structure, replace exterior lighting as per plans on file in the Planning Department. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan one oh seven as Lot forty-six dash three and lies within Central Business B and Historic Districts. Are you going to present? All right. Come to the podium first, and as you're doing that, I want to mention something else to the people in the audience. We have a guest this evening who is going to speak to us about restoring original windows at the end of the meeting this evening, and that is Preservation Carpenter, John Schnitzler from Strawberry Bank. And he's going to patiently wait here until all you make your presentations, and then he's going to enlighten us about windows at the end of the evening. Now, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Jenny Ferret. I'm the treasurer for the eighteen-twenty-seven Chief House Condo Association, and we're just trying to replace the four exterior lights in front of our doors to more period-correct, better fixtures, because they were kind of put in with the construction. I think you guys have pictures?
We have pictures, yeah. Do we have some questions? If there are no questions, I'd like to open it to the public. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak to, for, or against this application? Anyone in the public wishing to speak to, for, or against? Seeing no one arise, I declare the public hearing closed, and I await a motion.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I move that we grant a certificate of appropriateness as presented.
Second.
Discuss.
Very simple, minimal, straightforward substitution. It's in keeping with the period of the building. No problem with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. You have your approval. That was easy.
She signed it.
I need your signature.
Yep.
See, it's a compliment to your choice. You're limping, though.
This is not right.
Oh. Now, we have petition of two-three-three Vaughan Street LLC, owner for property located at two thirty-three Vaughan Street, wherein permission is requested to allow amendments to a previously approved design, miscellaneous changes as per plans on file in the Planning Department. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan one twenty-four as Lot fourteen and lies within Central Business A and Historic Districts. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Carla Goodnight from CJ Architects, and I'd like to start with, again, an overview of our process with this project. And what we, there was a change in the fall, when we converted the use of the third floor from office to residential, three residential units, in addition to the two residential units that were already on the fourth floor. And that sort of set into motion a series of changes, one of which being, we needed an ADA-accessible elevator to the roof. And we did seek relief from the zoning board of adjustment. We looked for a variance for a height adjustment to allow our elevator overrun to exceed the ten feet, and that variance was denied. So we had to make some modifications to the building. Page one. Page one shows the approved roof plan. And also, in addition, I need to add, we also pursued a variance for some elevator lobby space to be contained on the roof, so that the lobby would, so that the elevator would exit directly into an enclosed space. And we had a, an issue with a structural column that we were trying to locate in an advantageous position for the structural engineer, but we would, were encroaching on a overhang setback, and those variances were not approved. So we had to make some changes to adjust for that. So if you look at page one, you can see the original rooftop appurtenance and tower. And then if you look at page one A, you'll see it's been pared down to the minimum, eliminating any interior spaces for, that were not specifically mechanical spaces. We also have a slight adjustment to the planter wall on Green Street, and that's the, just in the area where it's sort of a darker-toned line on the Green Street, at the, starting at the garage exit. It's actually come down there, and then it's come up, and you'll see that in elevation, but just so you know where we are. And then there's been a, a block planter curbing that's been introduced on the, the side of the railroad tracks to give the, some definition to the landscaping and so forth. If you look at page two, you'll see the.
Wait a second, Carla, just for a second. Are there any questions about the, the changes on the first two pages?
I think there's still more.
Okay.
Okay. If you look at page two, you'll see the approved Green Street elevation. And page two A shows the height of the planter, which had increased one point two-five in this location only, one point two-five feet. The original approval was on the three-dimensional rendering that we had shown, so the technical drawings were not there, but we introduced this technical drawing to give you a, an indication of the extent of the change. We had removed the eight inches from the first floor and four inches from the fourth floor of the building height in order to lower our rooftop slab a foot and enable us to get our elevator to land on a level, on the, the walking surface and still have the overhang contained under the ten feet. There was a sort of ripple effect to that, obviously, through the windows, being re-proportioned and so forth, to maintain the original intent of the design as approved in the first application. You can see the rooftop appurtenances. We've used the same style, the same details, the same materials for all of these elements, only varying shape and size to bring us into compliance. The balcony corner that you see labeled on two A, where it says revised balcony corner, that is where the structural column will have to be moved four feet to the right to pull that overhang back behind the setback at, of ten feet, at forty feet. So, per the zoning.
Mr. Wykoff.
Yeah, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions before we get off two and two A. Where was the elevator override on the approved elevation?
On the approved elevation, the tower exceeded the ten feet, and it was in the tower.
So it's, the elevator was within the tower?
Yes.
Okay. But it did not go up to the roof?
It did go up to the roof, but the tower exceeded, the tower shape and size exceeded the ten-foot allowable roof appurtenance height, in addition to containing a lobby to exit into, which we've been told, we were not granted a variance for that lobby, so we had to remove the lobby. The interior space that you would exit out of the elevator into.
Okay. So when you came to us originally, you knew that you were going to have to go for a variance for the height?
For the.
Power.
Originally, the building did not need a variance, because we had private elevators going to the roof way back. There were two private elevators, which did not have this excessive overrun. And then when the change was made to the, the ADA-accessible elevator, the overrun exceeded what we had allowed originally, so we had to get the variance for that. And we sort of, the meetings were one right after the other. One just, yours was prior to the zoning. So we, in an interest of keeping the project moving, your, I think your meeting preceded the, the ZBA meeting that month.
Okay. Could I just ask one other question?
Yes, go ahead.
Of course, our last meeting was last month with you, for a couple other little changes.
Right. Right. And then we've, since that time, the zoning board did not, we were hoping to get our approvals and be moving forward at this point. And now, since we were not able to get the zoning variances, then we are now making these modifications.[1800.33] modifications, and we're back before you.
So, how much out of compliance is this... The approved Green Street elevation, if taken into effect the changes that you've made to the elevations of the other floors? You've lost a little space on the floors, right? Correct? You've lowered the building?
Yes. Headroom.
Headroom.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And how does that affect the tower if it were as it was approved? Do you know?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure what I'm saying?
Yes. I'm not sure.
I'm saying, how far out of compliance is the tower? And by dropping the building afoot, which you've apparently done, does that get you closer to being in compliance? And by flattening the roof?
There's three issues... Right. Three issues with the old tower.
Yes.
The concern of the peaked roof definitely puts us over, so we would have to flatten it out. And essentially, we could construct this tower in this new proportion that we've created. This lowering of the rooftop slab would allow us to construct the tower as shown, except we would have to have a flat top on it. But, the issue becomes that there's also been... We've also... We're not able to get approval to have any interior space on the roof that does not contain mechanical equipment, even if it is an elevator lobby, as that is not allowed in the zoning.
Yeah.
This is shocking.
Well, it's problematic, because if you look back, and I know our architect here understands this well, going way back, almost two years...
I know.
One of the elements that was really liked by the commission at that time was the tower. So, the fact that it's suddenly, at the very end of the process, being... Having such a substantial modification to it, for those of us who sat through all these different meetings, it's shocking, I guess.
So, just to follow up a little bit on it. So, you're saying you're not allowed to have any interior space on the roof?
Right. And we did apply for a variance to modify that, and it was not granted. So, we now are eliminating those spaces.
What about if this elevator came up into a gazebo if that thing were open somehow or another? Just as a...
The opinion of the board was that the covered space was excessive and needed to be scaled back substantially.
That's what the Board of Adjustment said?
That's... Yes.
I'm looking at another architect to see what her reaction is. Mr. Gladhill, please.
Is the building proposed tonight fit within all the zoning, or do you have to go back to ZBA?
No.
You know, certainly, this is disappointing. You know, we lost a major architectural feature, but our purview is not an architectural review board. It's determined whether or not the design is appropriate for the district. So, I just... While it's a little upsetting, and certainly, we've gone through a whole year of going, you know, of design development on this project, we're still charged with, is it appropriate for the district? Not whether we like the loss of the character, defining feature there at the entrance.
We have a great wisdom expressed by Mr. Melcher.
I would like to add my voice to Mr. Melcher's statement. However we may feel about the loss of the tower, I can't say that this revision affects the aspect of the environs in a negative way. I mean, you know, again, we have to put aside the thing that we're going to approve something we like. We've got to... We have to remember our mandate. Is it appropriate? I see no way where this revision is not appropriate. So, I'm firmly on the side of Mr. Melcher in this regard.
All right. Continue.
Okay. We were on 2A. Yes. And we discussed the revised corner, pulling that column back to achieve compliance of that overhang. I think we're on to 3 now. And 3 and 3A are essentially... Oh, I'm sorry. 3 does not show the handicapped ramp that we've also added, and 3A does show the addition of the handicapped ramp, which I believe is also illustrated in the renderings as you move forward through the set, through the drawing set. I believe on the proposed Vaughan Street elevation, the tower is missing a line on the drawing at the roof, but essentially, the roof is the same roof that is also pictured on the other two circular forms that are present on the building. So, if you move to 4, you see the approved Deer Street elevation. Moving to 4A, the proposed shows the extent and height of our planter edging, which exceeded 18 inches, so it's before you. And I think, other than re-proportioning the openings, there are no other changes on this elevation. 5 as well is the approved Green Street elevation, and then 5A is the proposed, and that was really just the re-proportioning and the revised roof appurtenances in the background. When you get to 6, you can see the approved and proposed appurtenances, which are essentially just different in configuration, the materials, the character, the elements are pretty much the same as they were, just revised in shape or layout. And then, we did propose a much smaller canopied area around the elevator, which you can see popping up on the roof there. And I did hold the canopy down slightly to proportionally it was a better look than having it up over the elevator, and then we were also running into our height issues again. So, you can see the planned configuration, which you also have a large-scale copy of on page one. But there's the planned configuration with the green elements. We're using the ground face block on the elevator, and then we'll be using the metal siding to enclose some ventilation ducts and so forth that are around the elevator. And then, the part facing Vaughan Street would be more of an open canopy, as we were discussing earlier, as you mentioned earlier, if we were able to keep the tower and make it an open space. And then, I said that we were encouraged to reduce the scope of it, or the space that it covered. And the renderings were adjusted to reflect these changes. And hopefully, as you look through R1 and R2, the Vaughan Street elevation, and R3 and R4, you can see the... On R3, you see the handicapped ramp in three-dimensional form, and on R4, you can see the planter edging at the back Deer Street side. And you can also see the handicapped ramping system along the planter as well to the front area. Any questions that I haven't covered?
Questions?
Just one question. Just wondering why on the... What you're still calling the tower appurtenance on top of the roof, the round shape, there's the square elevator overrun coming out of the conical roof? And I'm just wondering why it's... Why it's not centered on that form, I guess? Or is it trying to relate to something else that we can't see?
Well, if you look at it in plan, the little... On R1, it's, I think, a deceiving view. But if you look at it on 1A in plan, you kind of get the gist of it, how it really looked in plan. It is symmetrical somewhat. What we... Our attempt was to just create a small half-circle of covered space.
So, is the side of that facing... Facing west, I guess, is that glazed with windows?
No. No, it's just an open port.
Oh, it's like an open porch?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Now, I understand.
If there are no other questions, I'll open it to the public. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak to, for, or against this application? Anyone in the public wishing to speak to, for, or against? Seeing no one arise, I declare the public hearing closed, and I await a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move we grant a certificate of appropriateness as presented.
I second.
All right. Discussion?
The design, while the path that got us here is, you know, maybe a little bit disappointing to a few folks, it's still, well, you know, very appropriate for the historic district. Its character's still reflected in the surrounding context, and I guess that's all I had to say about it.
I can't support this application. We've spent a lot of time on this application. It's at the storefront of the northern tier, and it's a major project. And although this might be an acceptable design, the fact is that we've spent hours and hours tweaking the design so that it's all proportional and everybody's in agreement on it, and to take such a major change in one session without really getting a chance to think about it, I find much too difficult for me.
I'd like to add something to the chairman's comments. We spent a lot of time on this. This is what we do. This is what we're here for. You've spent a lot of time on this, too. I don't think... You probably entered into this particular presentation with a whole lot of enthusiasm. This was provoked by exigencies which you had no control over. And I have to go back to our original mandate. We're not here to foster or provide outstanding architecture. We're here to determine whether what you present to us is appropriate to the neighborhood, and I will go back, repeating Mr. Melcher's statement, that there's nothing here that is not appropriate. It's scaled down, it's not making as much of a statement, but in the final analysis, it is appropriate.
Right.
I would like to echo Commissioner Katz's response. I think that was well said. And then, to just add on that a little bit, in terms of how or how this is or is not appropriate, I would imagine, actually, some people might be happy that the glass tower is gone, because there are no glass towers that were built 200 years ago. I think, from a design perspective, we're all sad to see it go, because it helped define the front door of a building that had no front. So, my only real concern in the way I try to look at this is whether it's appropriate to the district or not, which has no real historic neighbors, is there a front door, whatever the front door is? And that tower helped mark it, and I think you could say every historic civic building had a recognizable front door of some sort. It was a modernist sort of front door, but it was a front door. And now, we've sort of lost the front door, but I do see that you still have the canopy at the second-floor belt course level, which doesn't show up in the elevations, but it is on the rendering.
Yes.
So, I'm happy to see that. And I think the landscaping at street level, the planters and the raised walkways and steps help to define that as well. The remnant of what used to be the tower that is now on the roof, I don't think is going to really do anything to help emphasize that idea of a front door. So, it, I think, a little has been lost on that perspective, but I do think that enough of the elements have remained so that people will be able to find their way around the building. So, I will support this.
And? I just want to agree with Chairman Dyke on that I'm not going to support this for reasons that she expressed, but also that this is the northern tier. To say what is... To say what is appropriate or matches a historic district in this location obviously doesn't work, because there's nothing next to it that is being developed or anything similar to this. The fact that the front door, tower, has already been mentioned, and how important it was to the structure, has already been established. But another problem that I'm having is that we have looked at the residence inn coming back, changing all the windows, and putting window heater, air conditioner in underneath every window. Is that acceptable to the historic district? Myself, that's a glaring problem with the building now, but we let that go. We've had a number of other issues similar to that. I'm just mentioning the fact that we've... We're establishing a... That people are able to come back after approval and sort of holding us to the fire, so to speak, and in change... Making changes to the building that we're pretty well stuck with approving, because, for one thing, they've already torn down their existing building. And if this is a problem with the Board of Adjustment not having looked at this, then, to me, that's a glaring mistake on their part. If this is just because of a change of use in the building, I would almost suggest that maybe the change of use isn't appropriate. And we must remember that she is, you know, selling this to us by saying, "Well, we've decided to make another floor of apartments, and that's why we need to change the elevator override." So, I'm not comfortable with the reasons, and I'm not comfortable with the design. I feel that the override with the round canopy around it is awkward, and apparently, just something thrown in to, I don't know, to appease us in a way. I'm just not in support of this.
Mr. Melcher?
I just... There's a... I don't want to call it a rebuttal, but if I can expound a little bit. There actually is a context in that part of the historic district. You just mentioned some of it, and there's a Sheridan Hotel, and there's salt piles, and there's other things as well. So, there is a context, and the same argument you use against the appropriateness, I'd use for the appropriateness. The lack of context allows variability. And we also have a duty for economic viability. There's other aspects to our purview besides just, again, an architectural view of the aesthetic.
Right. Anything else? Just one other comment. Part of my concern is that on such a major project, to have so... Such a dramatic change and not even have a work session on it, to have an idea... and not even have a work session on it, to have an idea of weighing the changes and how they are impacting the building, has more to do with my vote than anything. Anything else?
I understand.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. You have your approval. However, I just love Islington Street. It's come out so nicely. And now, we have work session requested by 30 Maplewood LLC, owner for property located at 30 Maplewood Avenue, wherein permission is requested to allow a new freestanding structure, construct a four and five-story mixed-use building. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 125 as Lot 2 and lies within Central Business, B Historic and Downtown Overlay Districts. So we can meet down at the table.
That's nice lighting.
Remember summer? I'm looking forward to that again. It'll come back. I will preface this by saying, and I'd already discussed it with the planning department, we're actually presenting a small one-story addition to the existing structure this evening, not the four and five-story new structure to the rear of the site. So this will be less intense probably than what you might have been anticipating.
Yes.
Good.
And perhaps shorter.
She was just at the planning.
This addition to the building comes as a result of one of our predominant tenants needing some space for their amenities inside. So in order to keep them as one of our tenants, we need to add this kind of annex portion to the back.
Trader Joe's?
No, sorry. I know. I'd love to tell you who, but I think that'll steal their thunder and their marketing and press release fun, so. But I think we'll obviously need to try to. Okay. So it's the small addition off the back. It's about 1810 deep by 91 feet long. It diminishes, by virtue of its size, we're going to be able to diminish a little bit of that fenced-in mechanical area and square that off a bit. So that's probably a good thing. And so we're showing two options in this package. On the top of the second sheet is obviously the previously approved elevation. Again, this is the Bridge Street elevation that faces Bernard's, Barbra Schaub, and Redmond Johnson. So the two schemes, one approach to this is to wrap it in a brick to match. What's nice is most of the window placements where they were beyond still work, so we pulled that whole bit forward. So the elevation still retains quite a bit of its similar look as before, as far as that center spine, the entry on that elevation still works in place. But as I was saying, in Scheme A, we're basically wrapping the entire thing in brick. We do have some access to a roof deck on the top of this, that's why you're seeing so much railing. We have taken the approved Eve band from the second floor roof and brought it down and simplified it because it still provides a nice kind of canopy, if you will, with the brackets on this scheme. And right over that main entry, we're showing that that brick would continue up and become kind of a half-wall parapet, and then you have the shorter railing on top of it. The other scheme below, which we're calling Scheme B, we're looking at this more as kind of a garden pavilion or really a secondary, you know, addition to the project, where we're proposing, and I have some little small color renderings I can pass out in a minute, a brick base to the addition and then topping that and kind of keeping with this idea of that turn-of-the-century industrial building, a board and batten siding material that would be in the same, if you recall, and this rendering shows you those closed shutter details, we talked about doing them in a cypress wood, so it was suggested by Dave Adams, and then treating it with like a stain, so it kind of had this cool gray, brown wood color. And we'd be suggesting doing that board and batten in the same material. So this is not a painted black box to match our other painted colors. It's a brick base with this warm kind of wood shaving on it. And then we have kind of kept the railing system a little more regular and drawn less attention to it in the scheme. There's a couple door and window changes as well as a result of some of what's going on on the inside, which I can get to, they're pretty minor, but maybe we will pass these out first and talk about the materials of the two different schemes as a start.
Okay.
So there's A with the all brick. And this is the far-left corner of the building we just kind of captured, and that's B with the board and batten material.
Tom, would you like to look at this?
I have a general feeling from the commission as to, you know, brick would be the safe kind of very, there wouldn't really be a perceptible change so much from street level as far as what you're seeing. And B would give it a little bit more of a distinct look, you know, perhaps more indicative of the back of the building, which it is. It does diminish, it will result in, we thought we'd have more of a formal seating area back there outdoors, it's going to make for more organic seating under those remaining trees. So my inclination is that the board and batten look could be a little more interesting to sit under and amongst, sit up close to, because you get a little bit of a change in materials, less foreboding.
What's the barn door material going to be?
The barn door material would also be in that wood. It would be very much like our shutters, which were previously approved. And I mean, I can actually bring this rendering closer if you'd like to recall it. There you can see on the stair tower there, the shutter, the closed shutter detail, that would be very much what the barn door looks like, but just barn door size, hardware, metal top rail. And of course, we bring all those hardware specs to our final presentation.
Does this barn door slide across or is this just?
Well, it actually could, and where we're showing it open and we're putting the harder on, it could, yes, it could be slid closed. The door itself is for a means of egress out of kitchen space, but we wanted to give them a little more bit of interest than just having a back door there. So this really tied in with all of the other language that we've been adding to this building. But yes, it could slide very much the same way. The shutters are made to look like they could open with their hardware hanging to latch open.
Interesting.
What is your preference?
I like the board and batten B.
Anybody have any concerns about your favorite?
I guess. Especially because I asked about the barn door details because with that, the concept B does seem to work better with the barn door than the brick.
Mr. Wyckoff?
Well, I'm just thinking that you're introducing this term barn door that was never the concept of the building, and, you know, there was sort of an industrial concept to it, I understand that. But also, you've, by using the large windows and door openings and side lights and canopies, et cetera, et cetera, you've brought in a, certainly a cosmopolitan look to it. And I'm thinking it's a bit of the board and batten in this application, I just feel is a little, it goes along with your barn door, but I just feel it's a little too suburban or, I just don't think it's appropriate in the district right there.
But then again, we also, I think, have approved the cypress shutters and the resultant hardware. So there would seem to be some sort of continuity established with that.
And that same cypress material appears on the front of the building. We have that main metal canopy, and on the underside of that, as you pass underneath it, is the same cypress wood between the I-beams, if you will, the black steel structure. So that wood color and that wood application does occur on the existing building to be renovated presently as well.
Are you going to be able to use wood board and batten siding, or is it going to end up being cement board or AZAC or?
No, in that application, we would use wood, and we'd have to treat it. We wouldn't go to an AZAC, and it just gets painted. We want the look of wood if we go with that approach.
So the material will be what?
Will be, well, maybe not be cypress, but we're going to achieve that wood color that we've talked about on here. Cypress was the suggestion as far as a maintenance standpoint.
That was for the shutters.
For the shutters and the underside of the canopy, exactly.
I think it's very important that it doesn't look like a cheap layout. So a large part of it depends on the execution.
Sure.
Could I just ask a question of Roger? Is that, does that raise any alarms of wood siding in the central business? No?
No. One thing about the wood is that it's on the Bridge Street side, which if you go on the other side of Bridge Street, is wood structures.
It's more residential, smaller.
Yeah, it's, if the wood was on the Maplewood side, then I might have more of a concern. But it faces the Bridge Street.
Anything else?
How would you treat the transition between the brick base and the board and batten?
We probably have, either, I would want to look at how the sills are treated on this building, remind myself, but it could be that it's the turned-down brick sill that sits on, or it could be that it's a cap. That we have to figure out.
But it would be brick? It wouldn't, would it be capstone?
It could be, it could be a capstone, or it could be brick as almost like a sill with a can to it. I'd want to look and see what the sill detail is on the windows as they exist, because that would probably give me a clue. I prefer the stone cap detail there, which would tie in very much with, like, you've got these retaining walls around the building to enclose some of the patios, which has that look. So that'd be my preference if I felt it would jive with the remaining building.
So, what do you think? I don't mind the idea of the wood on the back, because it is the back, and it's something different, and it kind of makes it look like, well, it's its own sort of entity. I'm trying to, I guess, define what it is that makes me just slightly uncomfortable. And I think if you look at the other elevations, and I'm trying to remember the other elevations, it's a very, very long, low building, so it becomes a very linear building. And the other elevations have nicely sort of broken it up with the rhythm of the windows and the kind of pilous piers of the balustrade. And in Scheme B, you sort of lose that on the top, above that parapet.
And, yeah.
You kind of lose that, because it's, you get these little tiny little posts and these giant expanses of railing, and then nothing breaks up that board and batten above the parapet. And I think, I mean, that's.
Because we had done, we did look at kind of almost taking the exact same panel and powder-coated rail system and putting it down here, and it looked so heavy, and it seemed to take away from the prominence of the main building. So we're trying to find a medium, a middle ground that was less heavy but still provided the parapet enclosure, but wasn't all railing. Because I know I get, I'm on the fence about the, on B, or on A, rather, see that we have, on the ends, we have the full railing height. And because it's a guardrail and it's 42 inches tall, it just gets to be so, it just seems so, so tall to me. But that being said, we've started to break up the railing by bringing some of that brick face up. Does that notion kind of?
I don't know if you need to do that. I mean, you could just be adding another post or something somewhere, or maybe making the post bigger, or doing something in some way to keep the same scale of the linear rhythm you have everywhere else in the building.
Sure, okay.
I wouldn't think you have to make the railings like you show in Scheme A to make it work necessarily.
Tracy, if I could just jump in, you don't believe on A that that parapet that she has indicated here over the front door, you don't think that that's a successful, as far as accenting this as a door?
Well, no, I do like that, that it, on A, it defines the entry more. But I don't know if you want to make that really an entry or not.
It's the, well, I mean, people that are coming from McDonough Street neighborhood are going to approach the building from this side, so I wouldn't want to totally say it's the back door, back alley, you know, back back, but.
The nice thing the Scheme A sort of raised parapet wall does though is it does break up that long linear thing that's happening in Scheme B. And if that's one way to do it, then that's great. There's probably other ways to do it as well, but that's what I think is lost between Scheme A and B is.
But as far as going with the board and batten or the wood kind of look, that's not.
I'm personally okay with the wood.
You're okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
You're okay with the wood? And I, I think I like it, because like you said, it's such a linear building, going with the vertical board look kind of takes away from one more long kind of thing that slides up alongside one already long thing, you know what I mean? Like I said, the brick would be, would probably be very much like a safe, goes, it comes background.
Is this, I mean, just as an aside, is this part of the lobby? I believe there's a T-shaped.
Yes, a crucifix, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, inside the building. Is this part of it, or is this?
Nope, this door sequence here inside, well, it still does carry right through in that pedestrian way. The areas that are important for the tenant spaces are actually the adjacent areas to either side. So through this door, you'll be looking straight through, you'll have the same kind of promenade effect indoor seating, it ties right in with the spine.
So based on that, then the raised parapet really makes a lot of sense instead of what's happening.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Have you accomplished what you wanted or?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think so. Let me talk a little bit then about some of the changes that have occurred on the elevations, window and door changes. You know, it's on the approved at the top, all the way to the left, we had that smaller sliding door system, it's the three panels that would accordion, so on the left-hand side of here. So that we've eliminated and just brought back in the existing windows and treated them as we did on the previous approval with the panels below. So there's that change. And then you'll notice on the second floor, just above the barn door, between the two existing windows, we've infilled that space with a picture window. So that's now newly centered over the barn door, we'll call it the barn door condition. Would you be more comfortable with the board and batten if the barn door wasn't there? We could pour out the barn door and just center the double doors under the picture window.
Or you can just change the barn door to industrial.
I could, well, yeah, if you want it metal wrapped.
Barn door was why I was favoring the board.
But yeah, so those are the two fenestration changes that have evolved as a result of the interior shaking out a bit further.
No, on the board and batten, I just want to say that I can see it on the back of the building. That point was made, and I just prefer the brick.
Well, we'll still have the brick at the base.
It's going to be fine, I'm sure you're going to treat it well.
Yes, we are. I'm good, yes, we are.
Treat your children.
Did you have anything to say? One way or another? You're good, okay.
He's tired.
He's been quiet over there, and I know he's excluded.
Okay. Good. So how are you on schedule on this? Do you have?
Tenants that are moving into the first floor, the retailer food tenants, are planning to be open in fall. So once the decks are closing and people are looking for warmer interior conditions for eating, that'll be the big opening. So into the holidays, that's the plan, and that's what they've all been.
So you made it through the other boards?
Yes, we have gone, we just left planning with them, so we got this all approved. We'll have to go back possibly for planning for this addition because there might be some septic lines that are now underneath that need to be air cleanouts, but minor, minor things.
Some kind of grease trap issue, wasn't there, that would have to be really interesting?
We have three grease traps on the site for our restaurants, and two are in the front and one is in the rear, and I don't think that it's under our new addition that's being proposed here. I think it's further to the side.
You bring back the stone of the wall.
We're going to come back with that, right, which of planning, we got them to approve what we're wanting to use for stone, they're okay with that, so you'll see that. They're okay with that, so you'll see that. We're redoing all the sidewalks of the city's request in brick and putting in new lampposts at the city's request, so this whole corner is going to be brand spanking new.
Yeah, I got a preview of being on the plan board. Preview of a stone.
You know.
How exciting.
Do you give one, do they have one set? Yeah, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have one more?
Do you have any more questions?
No.
Do you have instruction then? Let's go.
All right, I'd like to welcome Mr. John Schnitzler, who is the restoration carpenter for Strawberry Bank and many other projects as well, but he's onsite at Strawberry Bank, and we often see him on top of buildings there putting in shake roofs. We love that.
Yeah. Hi, how are you? It's been a while. Hi Tracy. She was an intern for us once.
Really?
Yeah.
Months ago, yeah.
Yeah, a long time ago.
You beat her up bad. You can do all kinds of weird stuff.
Oh my gosh, I'll never forget digging those post holes.
Oh, yeah. There you go.
That's pretty good. I had no idea we had this kind of linky share.
Yeah, Paige was one, too, once. Is she still on the board?
She's on planning, but she was serving as the planning commission representative. We have had a number of applications recently asking to replace windows. Last month in particular, we had a very old building with some very old windows, and they came before us requesting to replace the windows. And as a matter of fact, that motion passed, but there was also discussion about whether that was a good idea or not. So we wanted an expert here, and I understand that you are one, so you want to make some comments about your feelings about these things?
Yeah, certainly. Well, when it comes to sash, they're always the first thing to go, as you all know. It's the first thing everybody wants to renovate in their house for a variety of reasons. One, to modernize, make your house look newer, or because they're just so beat up, they can't deal with them anymore. Being in the old house business, my attempt is to always try to save what's possible. And you can save just about everything if you really want to. But there does come a time when it's just too expensive or not worth it because of condition or whatever have you.
Did you want to pass these things around?
So that's my pretty much two cents with sash. This is just an example of a historic house that's had some windows changed. And I could have gone crazy with getting pictures for you of all kinds of different situations. But I kept it just kind of simple to this one house. This place started out with the top windows, which are actually vinyls, inserts. And they're about eight years old, and, you know, they're just vinyl windows. Then they, they don't, cheap, you got it, they don't work well. Couple of them are jammed up for whatever reason, and they don't insulate well. And below are the original sash to the house that were redone and put in and worked quite well.
When you say, sorry to interrupt, when you say redone, you mean the original?
Yeah, those are the original sash.
Not replica?
Well, what they did was, on the back page is a little barn, they took all the sash out of the window and stuffed them in the barn and saved them, being good Yankees. So I found them and started to go through a process of restoring them and bringing them back to their location. And these are two that are done out of 15 of them. And I guess the question is, you know, how, where do you draw the line on this? What's, where can you not restore them? And me, I will, I will try to do it no matter what condition they're in, because that's the way I am. But these were dirty and nasty and broken windows, and for the amount of time and labor, it really wasn't that bad to get those back in line and in position again. It worked quite well. I think that each window unit, sash, the upper and lower, was maybe eight hours roughly per window.
And what would that translate?
Scraping them, that was scraping them completely of all the paint, lead included, removing the broken glass that was in them. And some of them were intact and others had two or three panes broken. Spot reglazing them and then priming them, refishing them. And a slight bit of fethaline to make sure they worked the frame okay.
And what would the cost per hour be for that?
Well, what's the average? John, you know, 35, 40.
What did you say, 40?
So what's that bring us for an eight-hour day?
Oh, 320.
320. To give these sash a boost for energy efficiency, these both have, the lower ones have panels in them. If you look hard, you can probably see them. They don't show up too well. But there is on the outside a solid glass panel on this sash here, held on by clips, so it pops off quickly. It has little drainage, sort of like a regular, normal aluminum triple tracks, if there's no tracking, it's just a solid pane.
So somebody wants to take that off, though?
You have to, yes. This application, you would have to take that off. But it's a matter of turning those clips and the thing pops right off. It's actually pretty convenient versus dealing with triple tracks. If you wanted to wash, you know what that's like, getting inside one of them things and do an adequate job. This is really quick. So there is the cost of that panel, that was 90 bucks. It's got a little, 90 bucks, yeah, little aluminum frame around it and then the clips. And then on the inside, if you look on the inside, that's got a track, too. There's a, well, or storm panel, I should say. There's a solid glass pane there of extra strength glass, sitting in a little rabbit with a little stop. These aren't quick to pop off, but the reason is, these windows are sealed off permanently. These aren't supposed to be opened and closed. But you could do, if you prefer, the inside with the similar storm like the outside and have that clippable thing. There's other variations of this. But for energy efficiency, that window, the historic one, is way outperforming the top one. And I had both of these tested to see how they work.
That's interesting.
And this guy, the old one, was beautiful. No condensation, no freeze-ups. The top one frosts right up in the coldest days of winter, and it's just all frost. Eventually it melts off, of course, but... So that's kind of my two cents worth.
Now, you had some experience over in Exeter recently? Is that this house?
Yeah, no, this house is in Elliott.
Yeah.
The Tuck House in Exeter, getting renovated.
Big windows, I bet, in that place.
Big windows. Windows similar to these, but larger scale with arches, it's an Italian eight-house. There's not a thing wrong with the sash, they're just great. When they got broken windows, they need scraping and painting and all that stuff. But they're in good structural condition. And they were going to get rid of them, put in pillows or some brand, and we talked about it, and now they're going to do this sort of arrangement and keep them, which was good because they were going through their HTC in Exeter and really having issues.
Yeah. So you think one of the windows in this house that you did would have been about a commitment of eight hours?
Well, these were eight hours. But it could get, it could be worse, providing if the window has rot damage or broken mullions or something like that. So there is a place and a lot due.
Yeah.
But for talking about crazy, think about the Portsmouth Elks building, 1991. That building, when that was purchased by Northeast Auctions, that had three floors of sash windows, wood frames with no mullions. And what happened over there was the ma, ah, not the masons, the Elks in 1912, when they bought the place, they had cut out all the mullions, but kept the original federal frames. And when we redid those windows, we figured it out that we could redo those mullions, and we were better off doing that, fixing those right there, and we set up a little shop, and it was cheaper than buying anything new. So you can go crazy with this.
What is a marvin window now? I mean, I should know, because we just did ours a few years ago.
You know, of course, a lot depends on the size, but I'm just estimating a sash like this is, I don't know, maybe 28 by 46 or something like that, or 32 by 50. I'm thinking something like this to purchase would be about $550 to $600 on a six over six.
I think we figured maybe we were with installation, like $1,100 a window or something like that.
That's a little rude.
That's terrible.
Well, I'll talk to my carpenter.
There are people out there, well, there are, there are, there are companies out there that are really making people, this Penguin Windows that...
No.
No, don't do it.
Didn't have Penguin Windows.
They were giving out free things at Kmart and stuff, and basically, they were looking, they were pricing windows out at like $1,800 per window replaced.
This lady that just left, the second lady?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodnight?
The building on Islington Street?
Yes.
She asked me about the transom. It was possible to fix it or make one, and I said, well, yeah, sure, but the real one's there, I know it is.
Yeah.
And she said that the guy who's doing the job has a replacement cost for that transom at $2,000. And I says, you gotta be kidding me.
She reusing the one that's there?
But they could.
Yeah.
And she's trying to suggest that.
Yeah.
But I showed her this, and she says, that's what he's got to say. Because I guess he doesn't understand it.
Yeah.
So it's not rocket science.
No, it isn't. I'd just like to jump in on this. I can see what he's done, and this is a really excellent system on windows that, you know, you don't need to open.
Yeah.
Like you said, this inside panel looks like it's held in...
That's permanent, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty permanent. And the outside panel, even though it's only held in by a couple clips, and you and I wouldn't have too much trouble, you know, mounting a 10-foot step ladder or whatever and getting that down, the average person is not comfortable holding a piece of glass like that.
Yeah.
And taking it off, as you might want to do in the springtime. And then the next step is then you have to get, you have to go back to the little expando screen things or something, you know, to make a full screen panel for the window, I think would be, to me, I don't like to see the full screens over any kind of historic window, whether it just be a six over six replacement window or a historic window like this, because it just, you don't have the sight, you don't have those lines and the division in the glass showing and the difference between the top sash and the bottom sash. You can't see anything when you've got a charcoal mesh screen over it. So I think what I'm saying is that we might be asking some people to make uncomfortable trade-offs for, if it's a very historic building, then I think it's important. I mean, if they were to come with the Langdon mansion or something and say, well, we want to put Marvin replacement.
You're exactly right.
There's where you draw the line.
They don't have the tilt sash for easy cleaning and a lot of these features. So then you have to decide, you know, well, which window must be saved and which one can you replace? And that's, that can be tricky.
Yep.
I think one of the concerns I have, being in real estate, is knowing that these windows, that the seal will break, and that seal will break in 10 to 15 years, and earlier on some of them, on the cheaper, earlier. And the expense of replacing those windows is just ridiculous.
There's something else to be said, though? Is that all the work that John has done, for instance, on reglazing these sashes, there's nothing to say that five years from now, that especially when they're on the sunny side of the building, the putty dries out, I don't know why. Is it crappier putty now than they used to make back in the 1800s? I can't believe that putty fell out of windows in 10 years. But, I mean, I have all six over six single pane glass windows, and the putty is just, every time I open a window now, the putty falls out of them. So I have Anderson replacement sashes waiting to go in, but I don't have time to do it.
Yeah, I've actually had houses that you couldn't sell because there were so many windows with broken seals that the cost of replacing the windows put it out of the seller's ability to do it.
Yeah. Historic windows do have maintenance to them, but then when these fail, like you said, you can't fix it.
You have to replace the whole thing.
You're into a whole different ballgame.
John, have you gotten into the weather stripping and the frame consideration?
Yeah, this one here has got those bronze tracks in the sash and the verticals. That's what they've got. You can't see them. And the bottom, there's nothing on it. It could have had that bronze track, but it doesn't have one.
You could, they, I don't know if they sell them anymore, but they used to have a friction balance.
Yep.
Essentially just little sides hold the sash, and that friction...
Acts as the weather.
Instead of, well, I mean, the other ones are the springy ones, you know, the aluminum ones with the springs in them, and they boing and make all kinds of cool noises. The other thing that we haven't discussed with old historic windows are the weight pockets. And, I mean, I'm not a thermal engineer and probably don't know what I'm talking about, but I would just say that I always think that having those two cast iron weights in a pocket that are pretty much exposed to the outdoors, that they will get, you know, the cold like the outside, and they transmit the cold into the house, I would think, very effectively. I always tell everyone, get those things out and fill up those weight pockets somehow or another with some kind of insulation.
Yeah, spray foam.
It's so, but unfortunately, that affects the function of the windows, because, I mean, they're there for a reason. That's why you have to get into different types of balances, like I was talking about a friction balance or something that will hold the sash, so it's not going to come crashing down on you, cause an injury, because that's just, they're pretty scary when that happens.
They are.
Yeah, balances are for whatever, for the larger sash sizes that you get in houses. These don't have them, but you're right about that. A pocket is a dead zone of cold air.
Little radiators of cold.
I have a question about the new lead paint loss. And how does that impact working on old windows? Because if you generate dust...
Yeah, you have to comply, so you have to be licensed and...
So that makes it more complicated to work on these old windows.
It will make it a little more complicated, but even if you're involved with inserting a new window, taking out the old one and putting in a new one, you have to be in lead compliance.
Yeah, I went through the course and...
So.
Are you certified?
Yeah, there's no...
Did you have to get certified for administrative?
No, all contractors have to.
Yeah. There's no easy way, unfortunately. The way, the way that the law reads with the windows is even replacing one window. And I don't know anybody who's doing this right now. Everyone's waiting, you know, for the arm of the government to come crashing down on us, because it's so scary. But to replace one window now, you know, it's not like 10 square feet, that's what the law is saying, but it, one window, you know, you're basically, you have to encapsulate yourself in a little tent in this person's house, and then, you know, remove the window, put your new window in, the old window's got to be disposed of properly. Then you're supposed to have some lead inspector, and there's only 12 or 13... Then you're supposed to have some lead inspector, and there's only twelve or thirteen licensed in the entire state of New Hampshire, and he has to come along and, and do a swab and make sure you've done a proper cleanup. And then, and only then, and this could be like four or five days down the line.
Yeah.
After you've done this two-hundred-dollar job of replacing somebody's window, then, and only then, can you take down the tent thing and allow the people to go, to go back into their own room.
Don't forget the negative air pressure.
Negative air pressure. And changing your clothes, you have to have a change of clothes.
Don't forget the fine. The fines are astronomical.
It's unbelievable.
But if you're the homeowner, you can do it yourself without having to comply.
Yeah. That's one way out of it.
That's the only way.
That's the only way.
I guess my, my issue, sitting here on the commission, when we have these applications come before us, is Tracy has some feelings about this. So how, the, your judgment last month was that that was the front of the building and those were original windows?
On a major city street, downtown. I, I think, I, I just, you know, every month, except this month, we've had people throwing out their three-hundred-year-old windows that have worked well for hundreds of years, and now they're going to throw them away and put in a twenty or thirty-year window. And that's probably fine in most situations, but in our primary historic downtown buildings and the ones that are beyond downtown that are really significant, I, I think it'd be a real shame to come back to Portsmouth in fifty or a hundred years and not know what an old window looks like, except if you go to Strawberry Bank.
You know, on the shipyard, we, we, we repair, we don't, we don't replace, and
we have large windows. And the energy efficiency argument, we, we, we survey all of our buildings constantly. I mean, we're all about energy survey and getting the data, and we just don't see that much of a difference between the new, the new windows put in and going out rebuilding. And I'm talking, you know, windows that are eight feet tall or ten feet tall by, by twelve, fifteen feet wide. They take up much more of the overall wall area than residential windows. You know, you're talking about twenty-five or thirty percent of wall area. And nobody talks about installing the wall, by the way. They only talk about the window.
Yeah.
But we, you know, our value of the newest, the best window you can get on the market isn't all that much better than a historic.
That's right.
Are you using any kind of panels, energy panels or anything on the windows? So you just have single-pane sash? Just single?
You've got to keep the air out.
I would like to, I would, you know, just to make things easier, I would like to agree with you, but I just don't believe it. I, I really don't.
Best R-value you can get in windows?
Single-pane glass, though. I mean, I've, I've had that in my house with no storm window.
There's a convection issue, sure.
I mean, the ice was forming a half an inch thick on the inside of the window.
Yeah, convection and convection, but those are seals, too. Okay, you have convection and convection issues as well, but those are seals. I'm telling you, we, we replace them, we're, we're doing a two-million-dollar project now, and you can see it from across the river. And when we're done, when they're done right, when they're done right, then you have to maintain them, you have to maintain the seals. But if you maintain the seals, the energy is not that much different than the, these are all masonry buildings, and that's not, it's not a residential wood measuring building. It's not that much different. It really isn't.
Well, that sounds good.
Well, I think, I think what impresses me most is when you're giving me this amount of money, it's really, there's not a lot of cost savings in going to the modern window of the.
Not really, but, but every sash is different. I mean, you can get some that are in good shape, easy to, to get back in line, and then some are just horrendous. So it's like every condition is going to be different. Every house will be different as to what you're seeing.
There's an approved test method for, specifically for wooden sashes, it's kind of, kind of a Crohn-Magnon way of doing it, but you take a, you take a, basically a butter knife, fortified butter knife, and you jam it into the wood, depending on the depth of, of how far you can put it in the wood over a series of tests across, say, a sill, for example.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll determine if it's really is beyond, you know, if it's beyond replacement. And that's actually an approved standard, you know, for, you know, for.
Navy standard.
The sound paid Spanish.
Well, secret interior.
But you could go into epoxies and stuff, too, and repair that stuff, or Dutchman, or any of that stuff.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention something else that we haven't talked about, that, and, I mean, I think it's important on historic buildings to, to keep the sash. I mean, that's, don't get me wrong, I'm not a big advocate either. I, I, I feel that they are much more energy efficient, but I, I don't have the knowledge to, to argue with George about this. But the storm window, the triple-track problem, is something that we have actually discussed before, that the trade-off is that we are losing the triple-track storm windows that everybody has, you know, over their single-pane window. And that, that is so awkward-looking that, you know, by removing that and throwing that away and, and then having the, the new replacement windows, that it's a, it's a good trade-off as, as far as the, the look of the building. And basically, that's, that's what we're really talking about. And that's what we talk about.
Yeah.
You know? Besides Peterson Engineering and putting five inches of foam on a building, basically, we're, we're really talking about.
But as, as an old house canning guy, see, I'd rather go with that triple-track window and preserve the old window versus get rid of that aluminum window, storm window, too.
I would have to agree with that. I mean, part of, I mean, part of the HTC, you know, says, is education. The word's in there, and even you may have a covering over a historic window, you still have the historic window there to show people what it used to look like, you know?
Is that our purview, Mr. Katz?
Well, oh, please.
You're not jumping, you're not jumping in on this, though.
Well, you know, I don't think I can add anything to this conversation, and I think the points have been covered by just about everybody else.
Are there any restoration products that you've seen that you, that you think are suitable? Or I know that you don't use any of these things, or?
I might have once or twice.
We're not going to hold you to that, which.
One thing I can think of, though, is type of windows. Now, I'll plug them, because I don't know if anybody else is doing it, but there could be. Brasco makes that storm window, or I'm sorry, that sash window, single-glazed wooden true-lighted window. And they have, one of their products will, they have, they have the single-glass sash, wood sash, and then they make the same thing, but they have it in a rabbit, a storm panel that sits in the frame of the sash. Have you seen that?
I put, did a place in Newcastle on Main Street.
How do they work? They have a high R-value.
They're very difficult to paint.
My, my, my next-door neighbor has them, and on some days, they fog up in between the sash.
Okay.
So.
Well, that's the thing with the, you know, I mean, with all the replacement windows that we're talking about, I mean, they're, they're all, the air is pumped out, they're all vacuum.
Any storm window can.
And some of them have a, a gas in there, an argon or whatever.
Well, and that's when, that's when you really have a problem, is when that seal breaks, because then they really have to be replaced. You lose your clarity.
I would say that you're absolutely right, yeah. When the seal goes, then, because then they fog up all permanently.
That's right.
It's good, right.
That's right.
Right.
So, Brasco?
Brasco has that, that product. I've not used it, but I saw it and I thought it was intriguing.
Joe Mina has them on his house.
Oh, well, that's.
The panel, the energy panels.
Now, pretty soon, I'm going to go back to my, my story or my, my thoughts on modern wooden replacement windows or, or wooden millwork and general factory-made millwork. There's something wrong with the wood.
Yep.
There's something wrong with it, and ten years, fifteen years later, after putting these things in, rot. Window sill rotted.
Yeah.
Casings on the outside.
New siding's rotting, so.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, it's either the fact that the wood already has mildew in it when they, when they use it, or it's, the other thing I'm thinking of.
It's farmed wood.
Yeah.
It's plantation wood. It's new wood, and it's not.
Grows fast.
It's not tight growth rings. Some of, a lot of it's ponderosa pine, which doesn't hold up outside well anyways.
Yeah.
And other exotics that, who knows what they are, where they're from.
Paloonia.
Okay. As long as we have you here, shake shingles.
Shingles. What about them?
Yeah, we can, we can talk to Strawberry Bank about wood shingles.
Your opinion?
I, I love wood shingles, I think everybody does, but boy, you, you need to be a millionaire to, to put them on your house.
But I've had problems with those.
Of course.
Not me specifically, my brother, for instance, up in Wiscasset, did his whole roof with, with shingles, and he didn't, at the time, because this is twenty-five years ago, and they didn't have all the breathable mesh that you can put under it and all this stuff now.
Yeah.
But my god, that roof only lasted fifteen years, and the shingles are rotted.
There's so much to it. It depends on the species of wood you buy, depends on how you ventilate it or, or strap it or put the breeze strip under it. All kinds of things, all kinds of little things. Is it too flat? Has it got a good pitch, you know, all that stuff? Trees hanging over it. At Strawberry Bank, we've had a whole gamut of situations with wood roofs. White cedar, even if it's Claire's Abell, is no good.
Yeah, forget it.
Because it's, doesn't have the growth worrying, growth worrying density as the Weston Woods, red cedar or yellow cedar or cypress. Those last longer. Once Strawberry Bank in the seventies put on a wood shingle roof with, right on plywood, and gone in thirteen years, because the moisture just could never dry it out. So we strap, we tried double-strapping to get a positive airflow, a, a channel. That worked pretty good. But we do have some roofs that are thirty-five years old now.
And they're lasting.
Yeah, and they're still okay.
Yeah.
I mean, they're definitely showing their age.
Yeah.
But they're still performing.
Yeah, good. So.
But it's not every one of them.
Yeah.
So it's, it's hard to say.
Yeah, right.
Who's going to live and who's not going to live.
We're lucky to have John here, and specifically, he came to talk about windows.
Yeah.
But are there any other questions that we should ask him while, while he's here? And you.
Slate would be great. But it's inappropriate to Portsmouth, to, really.
Is it?
Very little slate in Portsmouth. Very little. There is some.
They used it, though.
They did use it, but, but it's not common at all. Portsmouth had a tradition to continue with wood roofs all the way up until the twentieth century.
So the Oracle House is kind of an exception, then?
I'm sorry.
The Oracle House would be an exception, then?
That was put on in the thirties.
The slate was put on in the?
The slate, yeah, and Margeson's house next door, the same thing. Governor Dale, when he restored that street, he, he did those houses, and that was his choice. And Cochran's house way down has it, and the Marconi's house had it.
Yeah.
Which is now missing.
But those, those were added later.
The, the Margeson and, and Oracle House were moved from somewhere in town, and Marconi's was built and Cochran's was built. That was part of that beautification of Water Street. So, but it's not really that common.
Was that duplex that they had, that, was that an old house on, on Water Street, the Marconi's?
The big one?
No, it was a wooden house. It was in the Robinson book.
Was the big one that was in that parking lot, now?
I believe it probably was.
Yeah. I don't think it was a duplex, I think it was a single-family.
I was thinking it was a two-family house at the time, because it had enough, kind of a.
Go down and ask everyone.
Well, yeah, in the book, you know, she's in there, a little angry, still.
Oh, dad?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
And when I showed a picture of the house, I could, I can't blame her, you know, for a certain amount of anger, because it was a beautiful house.
It was. I don't blame her either, it was gorgeous.
Yeah, and they just ripped it down as part of the whole urban renewal.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was sad, so. Any other questions of John? I have one. Why don't you tell us what you think, what mistakes you think we've made?
There's opening the door.
It's fine.
Don't mention chimney caps.
I'll pick on my friend first. I don't remember the man's name. I don't think he lives here anymore, down on Haven Park. Remember when the sash got taken out?
Oh, yes, yeah.
No, but those front sashes were saved.
The front was, but the rest of the house is gone. But those were like the perfect example of sash that shouldn't have been touched, because they were just in great shape.
I remember that, and one of the problems is that what we had to do afterwards, in order to keep the windows from frosting up, and this is after hours were spent on each window, and they were carefully set into the openings and waxed, every, all the paint was removed and the wood was waxed, and the sashes would go up and down, and they put rubber bulbs on the bottoms of the sashes so that they would be tight and all this stuff, and they still frosted right up. So we ended up having to make these panels with the plastic that shrinks, shrink-wrapped plastic. So, I mean, here's a three-million-dollar house with shrink-wrapped plastic on the inside of the window. They weren't happy. And really, I didn't have anything to do with it. If they wanted new windows, I'm all for it. I was, you know, but we had to save the front, and I guess right now, they're still there. You know, they still have the original sash on the front.
Okay.
It was a.
Anything else?
Isn't there anybody else you want us to get on?
I could go on, by gosh.
It's your big opportunity. Well, looking ahead in Portsmouth, what, what things do we need to pay attention to as far as preservation?
Well, I guess it's, it's, it's what you're already watching, like last month, that house, whatever building that was.
I'm going to tell you, because maybe you're going to go talk to the holder.
I, I guess you just, I don't know, I don't know, I don't, it's a tough thing. It's a very hard thing to do, because people, the people don't know, and, and they, they think they, they want, you know, it's like they want a shiny new house like they want the shiny new car.
Yeah.
And, and it's hard to balance that out as a contractor or as a, as a board here. You, you just try to keep educating people or explaining to them what they have, and they usually don't know what they have. So if that word can get out somehow, that's tough.
Thank you very much for coming this evening, after a long day of work, to come and sit with us for no reason.
If you feel like I do right now. I'm surprised that, you know, no one came forward and objected to that approval after thinking about it. Part of the problem, I feel, is that if the law, if like neighbors or somebody doesn't come up and say something, it's almost like.
One of the neighbors is the fire station.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's the people in the fire station.
Well, but, but I think education is, is the key thing. If they don't know what they have and they don't prize what they have, then they're not inclined to make the effort.
Right.
And if they think it's going to be much more expensive to do this than it is to get the new windows, then.
And this is what happened to me at Tuck. They didn't really, the guys who were doing the job didn't really understand what was there. They assumed the windows were replaced anyways. And, and they weren't. The house was amazing, how much intact it really was.
I'd love to see the inside of it.
Yeah, it was great. And they didn't understand any of this stuff, and it's like, whoa, I'm surprised. So I spent a couple days with them, just a few hours each time, and before, you know, by the time I was done, they were really trying to figure out more about this historic stuff. And they did end up saving the sash, and they did end up saving the barn connection that they had, two barns with a connection, it's all original and intact, and they were going to, you know. So, I mean, it's, it can be done, you can sway a little.
I, I, I think really to round it out too is, uh, what John is saying also with the windows, is it's no more expensive than, it, it, I mean, if we're using cost as a purview and, and a little old lady comes up and, and she can't, you know, I want to replace my windows and I've got this contractor who's gonna put Anderson windows in, and like you say, she's probably paying eight or 900 or a thousand per window, my god, I mean, you could, you know, for a thousand dollars, what can you do to the window? Um, you could do five windows, you know?
I, I think to a certain extent it's probably situational. Uh, for instance, a New Englander with single light top and bottom, um, what's lost if they replace them?
Yeah, I agree, nothing, so, and half of the so-called historic windows that we are bumping into are replacement windows from 1900. You know, when you see a colonial with two over twos, well, guess what, you know, the windows are gone.
Yeah.
And to, for us to, you know, stand and say, well, you gotta keep these, but, you know, in retrospect, last month's decision, I feel, you know, my only excuse is it didn't really hit me that these were the original windows, I don't think that that was really made clear to us until right then at the, at the vote stage when somebody asked...
Well, the thing is, they have their approval, but that doesn't mean they can't, uh, replace in kind, or it doesn't mean that they can't go ahead and fix what they've got, so I think...
But if, if anybody's interested, if it came up again, I would say that they should preserve the windows on the front anyways. So that's, that's the way, that's the way I'm gonna go, so you, you've convinced me of...
There.
I think it's important, I think, I think it is important.
Now, just a question, these windows, these upper windows, if you're talking about...
Yeah, the vinyl.
Were they, were they exterior muttons or were they between the panes?
They are on the, they're in between the glass, yeah.
Those are your typical chi.
Yeah, one of the things involved also here is as far as original sashes and replacement, maybe there are some, but I've never seen a replacement window that has muttons as thin as the original, uh, single, uh, thickness glasses they're usually.
They can't do it with a double pane.
These are very thin.
They get real chunky.
Yeah, those are pretty thin.
Yeah, and, and you know, when you have something like that, just that fact is maybe an extra nudge for these people to have them repaired rather than...
Yeah.
Because that's a definite difference.
Yeah, it is a definite difference, and if you've got a federal house or Greek revival house, you've already come into a timeframe where that mullion thinness is correct. You don't wanna see the big fat Georgian window that you see in these new replacements.
Sure.
Type, you're right, it's an important point, yeah.
Before you go, John, I printed up the article that was back in Seacoast Online about three years ago about you.
About, is that from Dennis Robinson?
Yes.
Oh, jeez.
Well, I passed it out, they've all read it, so don't, if it's wrong, you better correct it.
Yeah, no, yes, wait a minute, wait a minute.
That's a great story.
Yep, I think I saw John down there too.
Where am I?
Down in the old puddle dock smashing windows in the sixties.
Yeah, so, I thought I told you we were aware of that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Actually, I think it was a button factory.
Was that your run?
I have, I have one other thing before you all leave, um, I had asked the city of Portsmouth to look into RSA 79-E, Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive, um, because I was really, really hoping after the assessment disasters that some of our young couples that had been working diligently on old houses in the South End, that there was some, something that would help people that had made that kind of sweat equity commitment to the neighborhood, um, and I heard about this and so we looked into it. Unfortunately, it only applies to the downtown area.
I saw that, yeah.
It doesn't apply to the South End, um, so if anybody else has any other ideas on how to, because I think our downtown pretty well takes care of itself because of the, the value of the land, uh, you know, P, I don't see many projects that aren't getting done there, maybe I'm wrong, what do you think? But the South End is an issue, we, we still have houses there that are in rough shape and if there isn't some incentive to fix them up, and the real estate price isn't supporting that any longer, so, did you have any comment?
No, I just wanted to hear what you had to say.
Yeah.
Bye everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, see you.
Anyway, I'm...
Have a good night.
I still wish I could find a solution for the issue in the South End and some of these other neighborhoods, the South End is not the only one.
But there again, we, that ugly...
Your neighborhood.
The ugly lead law.
It's gonna be very difficult.
I don't think, you know, it's really hit people yet and...
They don't know.
They don't.
No.
It's tough, if it's a very significant house, they can, I believe, apply to some of the state historic preservation groups to get, um, some grants to help with that, but, um, just for their regular old standard house, um, there's not a lot available, the federal tax, um, incentives are for commercial properties, so, most of the grant, um, sources that traditionally we used to use have dried up substantially over the last...
It's gonna get worse, too.
Yeah, I'm afraid the economy, it doesn't lift that ship either, so, okay, anyway, I was hopeful, but it's, it's kinda not...
Let's not get too depressed now.
[laughing] But it's an early evening, that's something to cheer about.
Yeah.
Somebody could make a motion.
Oh, I think that we adjourn.
All right, let's go.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the joint work session. At this time, I'd like to welcome members of the JBC, the Rec Committee, the School Board, city staff, and all and sundry who are interested in this evening's presentation. Just a word or two about procedure and structure before we go forward. Co-Chairs Chris Dwyer and Dexter Legg will be proceeding with the presentation. And at appropriate points during their presentation, it will help to focus and moderate the discussion in order after each of these. And naturally, we're not going to be too hard and fast about it, but we want to try to stay subject-specific. So they'll point out when those times are happening, and at that point, I'd ask that you direct your comments through the chair so we can proceed in an orderly fashion. And with that, I will turn it over to Chris and Dexter. Dexter?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
One other comment, I'll interrupt. You don't all have a microphone, and some of you aren't used to this primetime stuff. So always remember to speak into the microphone because they really can't hear it, both in the audience and at home. Thanks.
So is this better?
He's a star.
Tom, thanks very much. I'd just like to welcome everyone from the JBC perspective, as well as from the School Board perspective. We appreciate the city council putting this work session together. We're excited about this potential opportunity of leveraging what we're doing now with the new middle school and the JBC, and thinking about adding a youth recreation facility to that entire program. So thanks. We're looking forward to providing you some information, and we're looking forward to hearing what questions you might have. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Carl Deemer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Co-Chair? Thank you for recognizing me to say a few words about the importance of this work session. As Chair of the Recreation Board, I'm pleased that we are here tonight to advance the discussion about the replacement of the Connie Bean Center. As you know, the topic of replacing this facility was a key component of the recently completed Recreation Needs Study. The inclusion of a new youth recreation facility as part of the middle school project is a great near-term solution to meet the city's programming needs for the youth recreation. In addition, this proposal is also sensitive to the budgetary needs of the city. While we know that a new standalone consolidated multi-generational recreational facility is something that the city needs, we also know that it is not a goal in which is achievable in the near term. Meanwhile, the replacement of the Connie Bean facility is something that is needed for the youth of the community now. I am sure that you will see in the presentation this evening that there are many advantages of this proposal that will benefit the Recreation Department, as well as the School Department, and provide an efficient, quality service to the city residents. Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair, members of the Joint Building Committee and the City Council for holding this work session, and I look forward to the results. Thank you.
And I'll pick it up from here as the other co-chair to just talk about what we want to do tonight. And I'll echo what Dexter said. It is interesting how many different groups and boards have to come together around this decision. And we realize that so far, the Joint Building Committee has really had all the details about this. And so the purpose of tonight is to clarify for everybody who needs to weigh in on this decision, what this is all about, what it does, what the programming is, what the impacts are, what the costs are. You know, the council will have to take the next step in terms of deciding whether the funding is there to take the next steps. But we wanted everybody on the boards tonight to have the opportunity for clarification of what this is all about. So the questions are up there on the PowerPoint that we're going to follow. And after key questions, we do want to pause, as the mayor said, and the mayor will moderate your questions, your comments at those points. But there are some distinct pieces here. And as I talk about the pieces, I'll also introduce the people who are going to talk about them, because just as it requires a lot of board activity, it requires a lot of players who have been working with the JBC. So the first question about why build a new youth recreation facility. John Stokel, middle school principal, and Russ Wilson, recreation director, are going to jointly talk about that and take you through the rationale for what a youth recreation facility would do, what the programming would be like. We'll pause at that point, and that's for questions about service, program, et cetera. Then, second bullet, what is the recreation facility design? Doug Roberts from JCJ, the architectural firm that the Joint Building Committee has been working with, will take us through the design and site plan and the interior as well. Next bullet, what are the construction impacts? Chad Weathers from Gilbane, who is our construction manager, will talk about construction impacts and cost. We'll pause at that point for questions about design and construction. And then City Manager Bohanko will take us through some options that, beyond what we heard as a council about two weeks ago, for potential funding options. And we'll pause, obviously, for questions, and then we'll wrap it up with next steps. So three kind of discussion opportunities. And so with that, I'll start, and I think Russ Wilson is going to start.
Yes, and Principal? Stokel will join me. Going to take 10 seconds to digress and congratulate, thank the City Council, the School Board, the Recreation Board, the JBC, and JCJ for the terrific job they did on the first phase of the middle school renovation project, which was the artificial turf at the Portsmouth High School. The middle school played all their games there, the high school did, and we heard nothing but great reports from not only City Portsmouth, but all the visiting teams, the governing body of interest classic activities, the NHIAA wants to have tournaments there now. So thank, rarely do we ever get to thank everybody at once, so thank you very much for the great job that was done on that. Now, the Connie Bean Center, a quick review of how we got there to this point in the conversation. One of the great things the city council's done in the past years, as far as the Recreation Department is concerned, was to authorize a comprehensive Recreation Needs Study. Some of the most noted recreation authorities in the country spent a great deal of time looking through our facilities and our programs and gave us a roadmap to the future. The Recreation Needs Study was completed in 2010, and the general findings were it was very inefficient to run separate standalone recreation facilities, of which we have five. Consolidation of existing facilities is key to the future. And we started work on this area with the collaboration with the SIP organization at the indoor pool, and we have already transferred the operational management of the Greenleaf Recreation Center to the Portsmouth Housing Authority. Discussion points for replacement of the Connie Bean Center, has very poor recreational value. We only use the first floor now, and I'll get into that, which is about a third of the square footage of the building. It consists of one undersized outdated gymnasium, office, and restrooms. It's the standalone facility, which, as we stated before, is very inefficient. There's expensive system upgrades that would be required, as well as large capital investment for a long-term usage, and there would be no solution for the undersized gym and the limited parking. And one reoccurring theme through the whole recreation study is that the downtown area was a strong preference for youth recreation. This is an excerpt right from the Comprehensive Recreation Report. "The facility was not originally designed as an indoor recreation center, and due to its age and structural configuration, there is no real opportunity for renovation for significant recreational use. Any renovation of the facility for recreation purposes would be cost prohibitive." Real quick story, when these guys came, and they came from all over the country, Massachusetts, Colorado, California, they spent a lot of time in the Connie Bean Center, went through every nook and cranny of the building. We met down in the foyer at the end, I says, any first impressions? And almost in unison, they said, you have to get out of this building as soon as possible. Not like it was on fire, but it just had no recreational use for us. And we talked about doing due diligence, I said, well, what if we put some money into it? A lot of capital improvement, fixed all the issues that we have. They said, you need to get out of this building as soon as possible. I'll give you a quick tour of the building. This is the plaque that's, as you go in, it was Army-Navy Association Building, built in 1916. So this building is almost 100 years old. The consultants were shocked that we were still running recreation programs out of a 100-year-old building. A few years ago, the fire department, inspection departments closed the basement of the building and the upper floors to public use due to life safety code issues, including inadequate fire exits. This is actually how you get off the top floors, or you used to. Those ladders stop about halfway down, obviously, so people can't climb up to the building. So you went from floor to floor on half ladders. Open stairwells on all four floors and other issues that would require major capital investment. Since then, we've been operating on the first floor only. This is the only designated parking for the facility, 12 spaces in the back of the building. This is the first floor, which consists of an undersized gym, a lobby, two offices, and restrooms. This is the office in the restroom area, right as you come in the front door. And this is basically a shot of the whole first floor, standing from in the gym, the lobby, offices in the back. Now, if you notice, the gym in the entrance, it's probably the only gym in the country where in order to get to the gym and to the seating, you have to walk over the court. So if there's a game going on, you pretty much have to wait till the play is down the other end, scurrying in real fast before the play gets back to the other end, or there's going to be issues. And, you know, not that it's human issues or anything, but, you know, parents trying to get in, and grandma and grandpa trying to get in, when the ball's coming back down the other way, it's not a pretty sight. This is a 68-foot gym. We have low ceilings, about 24, 25-foot ceilings, with no runoff at the end of the gym. A regulation court is 85 feet long, usually with about six or eight feet runoff at the end, so roughly about 100-foot-long court. Again, ours is 68 feet. There's one regulation-sized gym in the city of Portsmouth, one, and that's at Portsmouth High School. No other gym even comes close, actually. And if, for those of you, most of you have been in the PHS gym, it was built 50 years ago, and if anybody walked in there today, they would think it was built last year. I mean, it's just state-of-the-art. It just goes to show you that if you build something right, and lasts, 50 years later, it's still the best gym in the seacoast area. This is the end of the court. There is one foot at the end of the court until you hit a padded brick wall. Where those pads are, that is the end of the original building, a brick wall behind that. Is this liability? A few weeks ago, one of our high school students, we have about 160 kids playing in our high school basketball league, ran into this wall and broke his leg. Certainly not a good situation. It's not the type of situation we should put our kids in. Our kids certainly deserve better than a 68-foot basketball court for all their recreation use. Same end of the court, emergency doors leading outside. More than a couple times a year, kids will be running down the end of the court, hit the crash bar, and end up outside. I'm sure when they came to play basketball that night, they didn't think they'd end up in a snowbank in the middle of the game. This is the sideline, which is getting about a foot, so if you're sitting in the front row, if you have larger-than-the-size 11 or 12 shoe, then you're standing on the court. And everybody that comes onto the court, when there's people sitting in front, you have to walk the whole length of the court in order to get in the seat. When we say it's undersized, it's more than an understatement. Facilities project direction, based on the information gathered from the study, the following is the recommended next steps for the indoor recreation facilities in Portsmouth, to develop a partnership, and we already did this with the Greenleaf Recreation Center, as well as the pool collaboration, and to replace the Connie Bean Center with a new gym as part of the new Portsmouth Middle School Project, enhancing the Recreation School Department collaboration already in place. Most of you know about that collaboration with the high school. We've been running the high school athletic program for about five years now. What most of you probably don't know is the relationship that we have with the middle school. Principal Stokel and I have worked together for about 20 and 25 years, and the one thing I always hear from Principal Stokel, no matter what I ask him, he says, of course you can. John, can we use your gym next? Of course you can. John, can we use the field next? Of course you can. Just to make sure he was paying attention to my questions, I asked if I could be principal for a day? He said, no. But we have a great relationship, and we look forward to that collaboration as we go forward. This is the opportunity at the middle school to create that youth recreation center, to include a gym and an office as part of the middle school project. The building would have a modern regulation-sized gym, full-length, with daytime availability for middle school usage, an afternoon, evening, weekend, and holiday use for the community as a recreation center, doubling the current use of the Connie Bean Gym. Right now, until school gets out, there's relatively no use of the Connie Bean Center. This would be terrific use for the middle school, as well as the recreation staff. They would use it all day long, from 7:30 in the morning until school gets out, we would take it over after that. The proposed addition is a gym, a lobby, and an office space. A little confusion over calling it a youth recreation center. There's no weight rooms, there's no aerobics room, there's no meetings rooms, there's no, it is a gymnasium, a lobby, and an office. Another little confusion that sometimes is quoted as saying that it's built next to the, and the gentlemen that follow me will get into that, next to the middle school, it is a part of the middle school. Traffic and parking, that will be an issue that comes up, I'm sure. We don't think it will be an issue. We will never be using this gym until the middle school is out of session. We have no need to use it before 2:30, 3 o'clock, when the kids get out of school, Monday through Friday. Anytime, as we do now, when the middle school has special events, we don't hold events. If there's a special function at the middle school, we cancel activities at the Connie Bean Center because all the kids are down there. Therefore, from 6:00 in the morning until 2:30 afternoon, we have no use for the gym, the middle school will be using it, we'll be creating zero traffic and zero parking during that time. We run no organized activity until 4:00. So we will generate little to no traffic and use no parking spaces until 4:00. At that time, I'm assuming all the middle school staff is out by then, people that use Parrot Ave and the other parking lots around there that work downtown will start to be leaving from it. So we expect no parking or traffic issues as a result of this gymnasium. This is the schedule, we put the schedule up for the whole, every basketball court in the city. The Connie Bean is on top, we use it seven days a week, from the time that school gets out till, depending on the evening, 8, 9 o'clock, all day Saturday and all day Sunday. Those are the other, people ask quite often, can you use another gym in the city? All these gyms are terribly undersized at the schools, and they're usually used for practice or other things in the evening. And we have copies of these for anybody that wants these. And Principal Stokel will talk a little bit about the middle school schedule.
You'll notice from this particular slide that the middle school gym is used every day from 2:30 until 8:30 at night. The reason that ends at 8:30 is because I would not allow the adolescent teams to practice after 8:30. Some would like to stay till 9:30 or 10:00, it's just something we do not allow. It's also used every Saturday for our sixth-grade basketball program, and that runs typically from 8 till 2:00 on a Saturday. So the middle school gym is pretty much booked. So the middle school gym is pretty much booked six days a week. So there's really not time available for other programs to use that gym. We do have the rec department basketball, the seventh and eighth grade leagues. They use our gymnasium a couple evenings a week for their practices because there's just not enough time at the Connie Bean Center. And of course, that would continue on.
Some of the programming benefits for the recreation department, significant improvement in recreational value over the services provided at the Connie Bean. I mean, if you see from the building, that's just a given, and this should be a no-brainer. The recreation department programming will remain in the downtown area, a very common theme throughout all the surveys that we did. The rec use would be seven days a week, after-school, nights, weekends, and holidays. What's good also will be, as John said, he doesn't use the current gym at the middle school on Sundays. But with this gym, we'll have staff down there. We'll be able to double up on that, giving more opportunity for all kinds of kids in the Portsmouth area. We'll continue the program for school year vacations in the summer. And the rec department's summer programs, we would still have access to those gyms in the nearby athletic fields as we run our summer programs down there now. And obviously, the middle school students would have seamless access to after-school programming at the middle school. Right now, they have to walk downtown. Obviously, winter weather, cold weather, snow, it'd be a lot easier for them to go right from their classes when they end after-school, right to the gym that's already at their
There were quite a few enhancements if we have a second gymnasium at the middle school. First of all, the state reimbursement for this project will only reimburse for one gymnasium. Even though, at this present time, we run two phys ed classes simultaneously. So consequently, one class has a full gymnasium, and the other class basically has one-third of the gymnasium, which I really call a mini-activity. If we have two gymnasiums available during the school day, then we can run two full programs instead of one and a mini-program. We also are adding that health room because there's also a health class that is going on at the same time. We'll be able to offer more intramural programs after-school. Right now, with one gymnasium, we have to really look at numbers and how many students we can accommodate. Consequently, not all students are able to participate as much as they would like to. We'll be able to work with the rec department. Since we have a late bus, students will be able to participate in intramurals and recreation programs from 2:30 till 4:00, and then take the late bus home. That's a major barrier for a lot of our students. If they go downtown to the Connie Bean, one of the questions becomes, "How do I get home afterwards?" I think we'll see, I know we'll see, far more students participate in after-school programs in those off-seasons. There'll be more space for our merit club activities. We run a merit club, as a lot of folks may know, and many mornings, there'll be 80 students in the gymnasium. And it makes it difficult to run an activity with 80 students in one gym. Now, with the availability of a second gym, we'd be able to run more of those activities and more of the academic team activities when they use the gymnasium during the day. Again, you're talking groups of 80 to 90 students. And that makes it difficult with one gymnasium. With that second gym, we'd be able to use that during the school day for these type of activities also. I think with the Connie Bean or youth recreation facility at the middle school, we're gonna find that there are a lot of cost savings instead of building a separate facility, a standalone facility someplace. First of all, we'll be able to add on to that partnership we have right now with the athletic department, where Russ is the athletic director for the high school sports. We can now move that throughout the entire school system, which again, will be a cost savings. Our second will be an efficient use of custodial staff. We won't need a custodian for a standalone building. That, too, is gonna be an annual savings. It's not a one-shot deal. We'll be able to share room space with the rec department. They won't need a conference room. We'll share the changing rooms, bathroom facilities, and all of those different facilities in the middle school will be shared with the rec department, which of course, is gonna bring about improved efficiency and reduce maintenance costs.
Now, I forget who was, who are members of the efficiency committee, but you folks should be doing cartwheels over this proposal. It contains many of your goals and objectives about facility use and program sharing in Portsmouth, and we just think it's a great idea. Finally, in conclusion, the general options from the Comprehensive Recreation Study for Reorientation of Recreation Facilities, they gave us three options. To replace the Connie Bean Center at the middle school location, to build a new standalone youth recreation center at a location to be determined outside of downtown, because there's just no land available downtown to build a separate recreation center, and ultimately to build a combined youth, adult, aquatics recreation center at a location to be determined. And hopefully someday, that will be the case, we'll be able to do that. But the recreation department and the recreation board believe that in these economic times that we live in, we highly recommend the least expensive, the most cost-effective, the most cost-efficient, the most energy-efficient, and the most utilized option of the three, which would be to add a second gymnasium to the middle school renovation project to be used as a youth recreation center for the Portsmouth Recreation Department. We thank you, and we'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you for your presentation. So I'll open it up for questions, Assistant Mayor. And actually, after the Assistant Mayor goes, or maybe now that she goes, could you please all go up and down each side? We'll start with Nancy and go down this way, and then come back up. And say who you are and what board you're affiliated with, rather than having to remember to ask you to identify yourself, so the folks at home know who's talking, if you'd be so kind.
I'm Nancy Clayberg, the Assistant Mayor of Portsmouth. And I just have a question. Years ago, when my kids were at the Connie Bean, we took judo, we took ballet, I took a CPR course there once. Are we gonna be able to use, say, classrooms at the middle school so that those kinds of programs can come back? Because obviously, you don't take a whole gym to do those activities. So is that gonna be an option? It would be wonderful to bring those programs back, I think.
We've talked about that. And those particular programs that you mentioned, we found other sites for, and they're maintaining their programs at other sites. But certainly, whatever the middle school will make available, we'd be happy to entertain all those ideas.
Okay, so can you please go up and down, just say who you are, and go around the horn, and then we'll go with questions again.
I'm Bob Lister, Portsmouth City Council.
Just say Eric. No, no, we're not. Just introduce yourself and say what board you're affiliated with.
Eric Spear, Portsmouth City Council.
Ed McCall, Superintendent of Schools.
Steve Bartlett, Business Administrator for the School Department.
Dexter Lang, School Board and Joint Building Committee.
Leslie Stevens, Joint Building Committee and School Board Member.
Ann Walker, Joint Building Committee and School Board Member.
Peter Middleton, Joint Building Committee.
Ernie Carrier, Joint Building Committee.
Mary Ann List, Joint Building Committee.
Ed Del Valley, Recreation Board Member.
Corey Semien, Recreation Board Member.
Kathy Burseagle, Recreation Board Member.
Elaine Syracuse, Recreation Board Member.
Todd Henley, Recreation Board Member.
Carl Deemer, Recreation Board Chairman.
Tony Coviallo, Portsmouth City Council, and Council Rep. to the Recreation Board.
Chris Dwyer, City Council and Joint Building Committee Member.
John Bohanko, City Manager.
And I'm your mayor and moderator for this evening, Tom Farini. So who else would like to speak? And thank you for doing that. Who else would like to speak and ask questions or talk about this portion of the presentation? Mr. DeValley.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just Russ, just one quick, or really, a point of clarification. You talked about the middle school, if we put for the gymnasium there, that they would have access after school, I think after 2:30, when today, I think you had up there that open gym at the current Connie Bean Center is 2 to 4, 2 to 4:30. So just for point of clarification, that time would be adjusted from 2 o'clock to 2:30 after-school.
We would not run any activities until middle school was done.
Further questions, comments? Seeing no one desiring to speak, we'll go for it with the next portion. Chris?
So Doug Roberts on the design. And actually, maybe I should say that it was just about a year ago when the JBC brought to the city council, and the city council voted to authorize dollars for design, because we knew we would want to preserve our option. No one was ready at that time to decide whether we were going forward, but we wanted to preserve the option as we designed the middle school to be able to fit on the site of facilities. So just in March of last year, the city council authorized that, and so JCJ proceeded with that design.
Great, thank you, Chris. My name's Doug Roberts, Project Manager for JCJ Architecture. We've been working on this project for a long while. I've heard some very compelling reasons why to build a youth recreation facility as part of the middle school project. Now, we'd like to present to you how that has evolved into the design, how we've incorporated that into the design. Again, we worked closely with Russ Wilson, members of city staff, as well as the JBC, to develop the program for the youth recreation facility so that it provided the spaces that were required, but also tried to look at ways to be efficient and have a dual economy with the facilities that are being part of the middle school as well. So I'd like to walk you through that. Going to assume that people are not familiar with the middle school project, so I want to help orient everyone as to the design of the middle school and how it is situated on the existing Parrot Avenue site. The bar to the right-hand side, that is bordered by Parrot Street and, excuse me, Parrot Avenue and Roger Street, is the existing 1930s middle school that is going to be preserved as part of the project. As we continue to the west or left of the page, we have our classroom bar that then breaks into an area that is the middle school gymnasium. To the right of that will be the kitchen and mechanical space that will serve the entire school. And then we infill back against the existing 1930 structure with what we're calling the student commons. That's the market square of the middle school. That will have the cafeteria, it'll have a stage for performance. It is the heart and soul of the school. And that then creates an alternative learning space at the exterior, which is a courtyard that provides natural light to all of the spaces within the school. The resulting physical education field that you see on the western edge of the property is roughly an acre, it's just over an acre. It's 260 feet along the west border, 350 feet on the east, and at its narrowest part, it's 120 feet across there, and the property along the library is 220 feet. Again, in an acre, it's not sized to accommodate any regulation playfield, but is appropriately sized for the physical education activities and needs of the school. In addition, the middle school enjoys the opportunity to use the fields across the street as well. Also, this is, the image that you're looking at is the plan that was presented to the planning board, and I want to point out that in order to maintain the stormwater, the strict stormwater management controls that are needed for this area of the city, we need that green space as purvous material so that we can satisfy the regulations. There's been some concern that possibly this area might be paved over as a parking lot. The decision has been made to move forward with the project that that will remain green space. The impact of moving, making this a paved area, not only would impact the middle school property itself, but the tie-in to the sewer project that the city is undertaking as well. So that decision is behind us. It will remain green space, it'll be available for outdoor activities. Also on the site, we have the circulation route around the building. That has been designed to accommodate the bus movement traffic, because buses will now queue onsite, no longer on Parrot Avenue. It's sized also so a 40-foot semi-truck can negotiate the turns, as well as all the city fire apparatus. Semi-trucks can actually come through, that 50-foot in length can come through and support the site through there. The youth recreation facility, as you can see, is identified as an ad alternate. Chad Weathers from Gilbane will explain what an ad alternate is and how it's a beneficial approach to this project. But as you can see, it's immediately adjacent to the middle school gym. The reason for that, the access to the physical education field is a continuation of this corridor. So it made sense to have the youth recreation facility immediately adjacent to. It also gives the opportunity to have an operable partition in between the two spaces so they can be shared, either for the middle school needs during school hours, or after-hours weekends and holidays for the youth recreation facility itself. Again, what we've tried to do is create a forecourt so that it has a distinct appearance on the site itself. The plan in the lower right-hand corner shows the condition if the youth recreation facility is not built. Again, the infrastructure for the site, the pavement and all of that remains unchanged. That building pad site simply becomes more purvous green landscape material. And we want to show that the youth recreation facility itself, the design of that, is integral to the design of the middle school. So again, as I mentioned, we wanted to continue the banding of the middle school itself, create a distinct image from Parrot Avenue, so that it is equal but different than that of the new middle school entrance itself. And we've also positioned the glazing so that it's sensitive to the neighborhoods adjoining the property to the west and to the north. So as you can see, we have the continuation of that corridor from the student commons out to the physical education fields. We have a lot of visibility, which we felt to be important. But then again, we have broken massing to be sensitive to the neighbors, but again, with limited punch windows for the offices. As you look from the northwest back at the middle school itself, you see the north wall of the gymnasium. And again, that is a blank wall intentionally so that we're not casting unwanted light onto the neighboring properties. This is a close-up, as you can see, the entrance for the youth recreation facility. So that we are able to get borrowed light into the gymnasium, the youth recreation facility gym, there are actually clear-story windows that are on the inside wall of that corridor. Again, that allows the natural daylight to penetrate into the gym, so you have a pleasant environment. But then also at night, the corridor itself, because we had varied lighting between that of the gym, the high-intensity lights of gymnasium and the subdued lighting in the corridor, helps filter the light that spills out into this forecourt. Again, the benefit of the light spilling out is for safety as well. But again, it's directed towards Parrot Avenue, not to the neighboring properties. And then this is just a close-up of that youth recreation facility entrance. The signage is suggested. That's something that we will develop as we move forward. But again, we wanted to have a very distinct entrance for the facility. Moving into the plan, I talked about the adjacency of the gyms and the ability to have the operable wall in between. As Russ indicated, we do have two offices. We have an entry vestibule that, again, is positioned such a way that we maintain the security during the school hours. General public will be able to access this vestibule, go directly into reception, the offices, where we have a security point right here at the end of that youth recreation corridor, again, for the protections of the students. But again, it then allows the students to come and go. Staff will have access to be able to get entry through that door. Also talked about the economy of toilet rooms. Again, we're using the toilet rooms that are designed for the gymnasium. We also have it set up so that we have the ability to have access to these common-area toilets. So we're not duplicating toilets that you would have to build if this were a standalone facility. There was mention about potential of having a health classroom used after-hours. Again, that was positioned so that it was easily accessible to the gymnasium itself. So there was a strategy in terms of how the rooms were placed within the middle school to not only meet the needs of the middle school, but potentially support the needs of the youth recreation facility. This is in large plan to show more of the detail. Again, you can see the changing rooms that Principal Stokel touched on. Could be used both by the middle school, but also by the youth recreation facility. There's the operable partition that helps segregate the two spaces. Again, you'll see that there's seating for 93 occupants in the middle school gym, and we have bleacher seating for about 220 in the youth recreation facility itself. The gymnasium for the middle school is roughly 6,900 square feet. That of the youth recreation facility, because of the additional seating, is at 7,300 square feet. Overall, the footprint of the youth recreation facility is 10,232 square feet. Originally programmed at 9,500 square feet, the extra space was actually the continuation of that corridor. Again, the width of the corridor is dictated by the number of occupants that will be exiting out of the gymnasiums, whether they're individually used or joined together. That concludes the presentation on the design. I'd like to turn it over at this point to Chad Weathers, Gilbane, to talk about the construction impact.
Thank you. Welcome, Chad.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Chad Weathers, I'm with Gilbane, and I'm just gonna quickly walk you through one of the points that Doug already touched on, which would be alternates. It's a vehicle that we use when this idea first came up almost a year ago. It was how to move forward with the design in a way that was beneficial to the project. And what an alternate does, because this is a standalone piece of the building, it allows us to defer a decision that you would have to make as far as cost. Because right now, we're working with estimates. Currently, we're actually out on the street, so to speak, with bids. And so what the alternate does is, it allows us to competitively bid this project as a standalone piece. We can see all the numbers come in. We have an opportunity to take a look and see where the total project budget stands, and then make a decision based on that. and then make a decision based on that. The alternates themselves, when we were looking at them, you see two up there. There were actually three at one point. There was an intermediate stage. The rammed aggregate piers are, for lack of a better term, it's something that we do to the soil at that site because it's, for the most part, clay. What they did at the library was they drove piles. This is a different technique to that and allows basically the ground to be built on. The second option, which isn't up there, was to basically do a corn shell, is to build the outside of the building. And at one time, we thought we were going to potentially need that for phasing, for swing space, but through the help of Principal Stokel and some of the other things, we've been able to avoid that. So really, we're just at the last option, which is the youth recreation facility complete, what Doug's been showing you up on the screen. The 2.31 million is inclusive of the rammed aggregate piers, so that's in that number. Again, what we'll do is, as the numbers start to come in, we look at the whole project. We're able to mix and match. These are standalone numbers competitively, but it's not a change order after the fact. It's not something where a few years down the road, when materials go up, when prices go up, escalation, you already have the contractors onsite, you have the architect, you have the construction manager. There's a lot of value to building this as we go. And now the timeframes. The reason for the timeframes is the youth recreation facility and that area of the building, that new classroom wing, is the first thing that we'll be building as part of the project starting the spring. In order to take advantage of both buying in bulk, maintaining the schedule, these are the two major milestones that, as construction managers, we need to make sure that we can maintain the schedule. The first of which being the foundation or that soil densification piece, which will be starting pretty much in May or June of this year. So in order to make sure that can happen on schedule, we would need first a decision on that component as soon as April 7th. The balance of completing the youth recreation facility is May 2nd, and where that date comes from is even though we won't be building that till later in the summer, things like steel have a lead time of weeks, concrete, so we have to back into those to make sure that those materials are ordered in such a manner so that we can maintain the schedule and build that in conjunction with what we're calling Phase 1 of the project. Again, the decision points are based on the continuity of construction. You know, if we deferred this decision even six months, we would be moving forward with making that a wall, which is now shown as a divider curtain. If all of a sudden, six months or even a year or two years down the road, even if we were still onsite, we would literally have to take down brand-new construction to build the youth rec center. So there's a lot of advantages to building this as we go, starting right out of the gate this spring. Maintaining the schedule and then materials, everything specified in the youth rec center is a continuation of everything that's already specified in the school, which helps, again, in the size of the project, bulk materials, purchasing, and they all have the same chips components, the high-performance school components, that again is a continuation right through the project. So with that said...
Thank you, Chad, and thank you, Doug. Questions for either or both of them? Council Coviallo?
This question's for Mr. Roberts. I'm in the construction business, and I think even I, at this point, fail to appreciate how large this facility is. Is, do you think this expansion to the left with the gymnasium is going to be, I don't want to say make it worse because I think it's great for the city, but do you understand what I'm saying? It's a really big facility that we're going to have. We're doubling the size of the facility. And I think the public, as they pass through the area, they're going to really feel the impact of the building. And I know you've done a lot to make the building friendly for the pedestrian, friendly for the public, but do you think the expansion even further will have negative impact on the size of the structure?
Actually, no. The location of the gymnasium in the northwest corner of the property gives us a setback from the street, helps break down the massing that is most visible from Parrot Ave. So actually, it lends itself to establishing that as a unique aspect of the design, giving it a place on the site. But again, it's respectfully away from Parrot Ave. and giving dominance to the, or prominence to the middle school itself. So it's almost a backdrop to the middle school. And it actually works extremely well on that part of the parcel.
And do you happen to have any rendering to what it would look like without it?
Not with us this evening, no.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Assistant Mayor?
Are you finding that the price of materials is reasonable right now with the economy and, you know, low construction projects? Does that make it even more sense for us to do something like this now because of the price of materials?
Just like with everything else in the economy, everybody's trying to build right now because there is a lot of advantage between manpower and materials. As a general rule of thumb, maybe we don't see the levels of escalation in the next year that we have, but going out, anytime you go two and three years out, the typical rule of thumb is at least 5% on the cost of the project as escalation per year. So using that as an escalation factor, and then when you just start thinking about, again, if two or three years down the road after we leave, you're going to have to engage an architect, you're going to have to engage a builder, and you're also, one of the things that we've been really trying to balance is disruption to the downtown area and to the students. So immediately after finishing a brand-new project, you would be mobilizing onsite again and basically taking the gym out of commission. So, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council Listor?
Just like to ask, does this in any way affect the phasing issue that you're working with?
No, because the way that we've structured the phasing, that portion of the building is the first portion to be built. So if anything, it's not required, but it does give us a little more flexibility as we move to future phases. The intent is always to build the biggest chunk first to give us the most amount of flexibility. The phasing works with or without the youth rec center, and it doesn't complicate things because it's being built, again, in conjunction with that first phase, so...
Ernie, Mr. Carrier?
Chad, we may have talked about this, but the structural component of adding the gym, are there any accommodations that have to be made to the columns at the school so that...